Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's regular meeting for Tuesday, September 24th, 2019. My name is Kim Clark-Baskin and I'm your deputy city clerk. With us today, we have our sign language interpreter, Nick Miller. The following is a list of legislation to be introduced by Pittsburgh City Council. Councilman Ricky Burgess presents Bill Number 2078. Resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an amendment to contribution agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Department of Transportation, the County of Allegheny, the Port Authority of Allegheny County, Holdings Acquisition Company LP, and the Pittsburgh Steelers for the purpose of the city making final payments to the Commonwealth due towards projects related to proposed roadway infrastructure improvements on the city's north shore, and further authorizing the city solicitor to enter into an amended consent order to document any revised obligations consistent with this resolution. Bill Number 2079. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Finance to enter into an agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to be able to exchange data; no costs will be incurred. Bill Number 2080. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Finance to enter into an agreement with Mar Dussel to provide auditing services to the city of Pittsburgh; costs not to exceed $406,503 over three years with an option for an additional two years. Bill Number 2081. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Finance to enter into an agreement with CSS Inc. for the provision of a business tax and revenue management software package for sum not to exceed $5 million over five years. Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 2082. Resolution providing for an agreement with the Pittsburgh Board of Public Education or another vendor chosen through the city bid process for the purpose of providing meals in connection with the 2019-2020 Food Service Program and the Department of Parks and Recreation; total cost shall not exceed $850,000. Councilwoman Harris presents Bill Number 2083. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into an agreement with National Testing Network for services relating to the administration of a fire barrier assessment; costs not to exceed $49,875. Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 2084. Resolution authorizing the city to enter into a professional services agreement with the University of Pittsburgh Medical Center Presbyterian for the purchase of pharmaceutical supplies, medications, and related support services necessary for the daily operations of the city's Bureau of Emergency Medical Services for a period of four years commencing January 1, 2020 at an overall cost not to exceed $192,000. Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 2085. Resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for 909 Liberty Interior Renovations at 909 Liberty Avenue. Bill Number 2086. Resolution authorizing the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh to acquire all the city's right, title, and interests, if any, in and to the following publicly owned properties in the 21st Ward of the city of Pittsburgh. Council District Number 6, Site Assemblage for Affordable Residential Development on Sedgwick Street. Bill Number 2087. Resolution authorizing the URA of Pittsburgh to acquire all the city's right, title, and interests, if any, in and to the publicly owned properties in the 3rd Ward of the city of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County, Council District Number 6, Expanded Parking Facility at 1812 Enoch Street. Bill Number 2088. Resolution approving execution of a deed by and between the URA of Pittsburgh and the city of Pittsburgh for the sale of Block 125 S., Lot 125, in the 13th Ward of the city of Pittsburgh, Council District Number 9, Public Park, 7100 Hamilton Avenue. Bill Number 2089. Resolution authorizing the URA of Pittsburgh to acquire all the city's right, title, and interests, if any, in and to the publicly owned properties in the 5th Ward of the city of Pittsburgh. Council District Number 6, Affordable Townhouse Development, 3313, 3315, 3317, 3319 Milwaukee Street, 634, 636 Heron Avenue, and 633 and 635 Osippee Street. Bill Number 2090. Resolution authorizing the URA of Pittsburgh to acquire all of the city's right, title, and interests, if any, in and to the publicly owned property in the 21st Ward of the city of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County, Council District Number 6, Future Development on Bealdale Street. Bill Number 2091. Resolution authorizing the URA of Pittsburgh to acquire all of the city's right, title, and interests, if any, in and to the publicly owned properties in the 5th Ward of the city of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County, Council District Number 6, Rehabilitation and New Construction at 2932 Wiley Avenue. Councilwoman Kellsmith presents Bill Number 2092. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the city of Pittsburgh and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to apply for a grant from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County's Gaming Economic Development Fund for up to $500,000 to provide funding for the development of the West End Trolley Trail, and should the grant be awarded by RAC, all authorized to enter into agreements with RAC. In the event this grant is awarded, this resolution provides for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $500,000 for this stated purpose. Bill Number 2093. Resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Pittsburgh and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to apply for a grant from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County's Gaming Economic Development Fund for up to $500,000 to provide funding for Shady Side Streetscape improvements. Bill Number 2094. Resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Pittsburgh and the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to apply for a grant from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County's Gaming Economic Development Fund for up to $500,000 to provide funding for development of the Green Boulevard. Bill Number 2095. Resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Pittsburgh and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to apply for a grant from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County's Gaming Economic Development Fund for up to $500,000 to provide funding for the construction of a pedestrian bridge at Davis Avenue. Bill Number 2096. Resolution, further amending Resolution Number 772 of 2016, effective January 1 of 2017, as amended, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2017 Capital Budget and the 2017 Community Development Block Grant Program; Approving the 2017 through 2022 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Southwest Pittsburgh CDC by $16,500, Increasing Hope for Tomorrow by $5,000, Increasing Sheridan Community Council by $1,500, Increasing REEM Recreation Center by $5,000, Increasing Building Bridges for Business by $5,000." This bill is sponsored by Councilwoman Teresa Kellsmith. Bill Number 2097. Resolution, further amending Resolution Number 863 of 2018, effective January 1, 2019, as amended, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2019 Capital Budget and the 2019 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2019 through 2024 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Birmingham Foundation West End Employment Center by $1,000, Increasing Sheridan Community Council by $1,000, Updating J.D. Edwards Financial Information, and Authorizing a Subsequent Agreement for Operational and Administrative Expenses." This bill is sponsored by Councilwoman Teresa Kellsmith. Councilwoman Strausberger presents Bill Number 2098. Resolution, amending Resolution 297 of 2019, entitled, "Resolution Amending an Agreement with EDocs Technologies LLC for Licensing Services and Maintenance and Support Service to Update the Scope of Work at an Additional Cost Not to Exceed $16,263.89." Bill Number 2099. Resolution, amending Resolution 769 of 2018, which had previously amended Resolution Number 479 of 2016, authorizing the mayor, the director of permits, licensing, and inspections, the director of city planning, and the director of innovation and performance to enter into a second amended professional services agreement with Building I, Inc., to purchase software and related support services that will create an interactive map for internal and public visual display of planning, permit, license, and violation data by adding $135,300 in compensation in raising the overall contract to an amount not to exceed $341,300. Council President Bruce Kraus presents Bill Number 2100. Communication from Jennifer Olzinger, Acting Director of the Office of Management and Budget, submitting a $3,180 donation on behalf of the Pittsburgh Pirates Charities for the support of the city's sports, baseball, and softball teams. That concludes the reading of the legislation today. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of Pittsburgh City Council for today, Tuesday, September 24th, 2019. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Burgess, Ms. Harris.
Here.
Ms. O'Connor, Mrs. Kellsmith, Ms. Strausberger.
Here.
Mr. Kraus, President.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman O'Connor, I understand you have some very special guests with us this morning that are going to lead us in the pledge.
Yes, we do. We have a number of kids here for Child Care Day, so can everybody spin around real quick? Now, they learned the Pledge of Allegiance yesterday, so we'll see if we...
And could I ask everyone to stand, please?
Okay, ready?
Say, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Very good. Turn them back around. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, kids, now remember, I said we have something else we have to do. So, for some council members and for everybody in the mayor's office, there's a back door right there that goes into the mayor's office. So, everybody's a little bit tired. It's Tuesday, it's 10:30 in the morning. So, what we need you to do on the count of three is scream as loud as you possibly can. Do you think you can do that? Okay, ready? One, two, three. Very good. We all needed that. I think everybody's now awake. So, you guys are here for a very special day in the city of Pittsburgh. A lot of people are talking about what they call services that help children, and we are making a big push here and all around the state and across the country to call it childcare because it's more than just a couple hours at school, it's a number of hours outside of school, and a number of providers do a lot for our communities and our neighborhoods. So, whereas through legislative action in June 2018, the Pennsylvania General Assembly amended and supplemented PL 31, Number 21, the Human Service Code, updated the Pennsylvania Department... Oh, they're yawning already. Okay, I'll go as quick as I can. Pennsylvania Department of Human Services, use of the term daycare as it relates to children to the term childcare. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh is hereby recognize the need for the use of the appropriate terminology and language regarding childcare so that the invaluable and formidable role that it plays in a child's life is more accurately described, and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh is hereby declare Tuesday, September 24th, 2019, to be Call It Child Care Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
May I have a motion in a second, please? All in favor, aye, motion passes.
All right. Do the teachers want to come up? No, no, director? Nobody's going to say anything? Okay, here's what we're going to do. I think the mic is on. We will try to do this real quick. Can you just say your name?
And how old you are? And how old you are?
Ready? Say your name.
My name is Mila.
Mila.
Hannah. The Mari. Uh, uh, uh. Last name.
Okay, there we go.
It's Ari. Eman. Lee.
Miss... My name, Kason. Lola Freeman. My name is Maxwell. My name is Trady. My name's Liam. My name's Janaya. My name is Noah. My name's Concia. My name's Trager. My name is Gavin. My name is Gamara. My name is Roman. My name is Mimi. My name is Jayden.
Okay, everybody's here. You can do one more thing. Oh, sorry, I'm so sorry.
My name is Terry.
All right, so we got everybody here. Do you want to do, before we take a group picture, since you're on TV, do you want to wave to everybody at home watching, hopefully? All right. Sounds good. So, we will take a group picture, so we have all members come up. We're going to have all the council members come up and take a big picture.
Let's have all members, please.
So, I just want to thank the mayor's office and city council for their support of all of those who do important work every day in our communities for our youngest children. It's really important to us that we use the appropriate term. At the center of every day in our care settings is the child, and so with this day, we can now move forward and call it childcare instead of daycare. So, thank you.
All right, everybody ready? Right here. Say cheese.
Cheese.
Ah, no, that wasn't planned. Thank you. Bye-bye. I forgot to mention, sorry, we have all the teachers and educators here. They're all wearing their Trying Together shirts. Thank you very much for all of your support. The kids wouldn't be where they are without all of you, and I think we're going to try to organize a group shot right out of council chambers for all of the teachers and educators as well. So, all right, thank you, guys.
Bye.
Bye. All right, Rebecca, you've got a tough act to follow there. If you know anything about entrepreneurs, startups, mentoring programs in our region for at least 10 years, if not 25 years of total experience, Rebecca Harris is somebody that has made a footprint in the city of Pittsburgh for young entrepreneurs, especially for women entrepreneurs, to get a head start and to grow their companies, grow our region, and grow our city. So, whereas the Center for Women's Entrepreneurship at Chatham University, established in 2005, creates economic opportunity for women through entrepreneurial education and training, mentoring, and networking. And whereas Rebecca Harris, born and raised in St. Louis, educated at Northwestern University, and with an MBA in Marketing from the Fox School of Business at Temple, has been the executive director, I will try to close that door there, the executive director for 10 years, expanding its program through its designation as a Women's Business Center by the U.S. Small Business Administration. And whereas Rebecca has applied her entrepreneurial skills to effort, big change, to benefit women, businesses, owners, through the design and implementation of new programming like the Women's Business Leadership Breakfast Series and other successful programs like My Board, My Business Startup, My Business Growth, and My Consulting Corner. And whereas after 10 years leading the Center for Women's Entrepreneurship at Chatham, Rebecca will be fortunately stepping down, knowing that the education, training, mentorships, and other programs for female business owners are in a strong and good space. Using 25 years of experience as an entrepreneur, consultant, and marketing specialist, Rebecca will be restarting a consulting business she operated before joining the center. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh is hereby recognize and commend Rebecca for her commitment to helping women start and grow businesses, and for her strategic mission to promote systematic and cultural change in the business community, and congratulates her on 10 successful years at Chatham University. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, September 24th, 2019, to be Rebecca Harris Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
May I have a motion in a second, please?
Don't move.
All in favor, aye, motion passes. Congratulations, Rebecca. Thank you.
That's kind of a hard act to follow, all these children, so I have to put on my camp voice to say thank you, Councilman O'Connor and the entire council, for supporting entrepreneurial initiatives which have been and will be launched in the city. I'm honored to receive this proclamation, and great cities now and in the future will encourage and support entrepreneurship. These cities will be nimble and make it easy for everyone, especially women, minorities, and disadvantaged individuals to start and grow businesses in neighborhoods where they live. Great cities have dynamic companies, and they have first-class academic institutions, and they have affordable living and transportation. Those are really a given, but I think a truly great city must have a fabric of lively and vibrant neighborhoods made up of local businesses which become centerpieces of every neighborhood, and your local coffee shop, and your cafe, and your dry cleaners, and your hair salon, and the list goes on. And what if we couldn't go to our coffee shop this morning, or when we stay up late and want to have fun? Where do we go? It's an honor to be part of the First Advisory Board of Entrepreneurship to help small businesses, which Councilman O'Connor started, and I think there's so many possibilities. But let's talk about what that really means. When we talk about inclusion in the city, what I think that means, and real inclusion, is economic inclusion. Main Street entrepreneurship is a great example of economic inclusion. Local businesses and local neighborhoods own and run by people in their neighborhoods. I plan to continue this critical work with these people and these businesses. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Actually, Councilwoman, before you step away, can I make, may I say something? So, we do this sometimes, Rebecca, so it's not out of form, but I just want to acknowledge how many women-owned businesses we're gaining in the city, and I really want to say thank you for that. I have something, like we use a round number because we can't keep track of the new businesses on just Butler Street alone, 40 or 50 new businesses in the last five or six years, and the majority of them are women-owned. There are signage in windows now, women at work in Lawrenceville, so look out for those. They're red and white if you're on the street because we think there's a higher density of women-owned businesses in Lawrenceville than anywhere in Western Pennsylvania. And it's not just retail bricks and mortar, although we're really grateful for those revitalizing and being gathering places in our neighborhoods. There are makers, there are producers, there are distributors, and there are entrepreneurs at all different sectors of our economy that I'm seeing, especially in the younger generation, right, under 40 generations, so many female entrepreneurs. So, thank you so much for your work. I think it's making a real difference in creating local wealth and rebuilding the power in our neighborhoods.
And we will continue those out front too. We have a Women's Business Center under the SBA, and I will continue advising, but please support women and entrepreneurs, and I encourage you to go out today and buy from them.
That's right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Nice job, Madam. May we have Councilwoman Harris folded by Councilman Burgess?
This is an honor to have...
aid, and carliopromnary disease, now I lost my place, resuscitation, CPR classes, breathing screening, stroke support groups, gardening, and also board games. And whereas Allen's Place Senior Citizen Partnership, reaching the organization mission, celebrates, will be celebrated its 10th year anniversary. That should have been highlighted, 10 years already, can't believe that. On September 29, 2019, Allen's Place Senior Citizen Prom connects participants, the program coaches, and celebrates their achievement goals of better health. This program captures senior citizens that are aging out of Allen's Place communities, which is significant level of institutional care, rather than remaining in a home with care resources. And whereas living, our lives have been being changed by virtue of hard work and dedication of Allen's Place Senior Citizen Prom. The honorees, exemplary professional community volunteers for sharing their services and promoting health initiatives. The Allen Place Senior Citizens Prom honorees, Bob Allen, Denise Barron, Laura Ann Bray, Rose Cherishen, Martina Corbin, Joy Maxberry, Woodruff, Sharon McFadden, Anna T. Murchison, Marvis Nichols, and Minister Marshall Richburg, Alfred Russell, and Robert J. Stone. And there are now four, be it resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby celebrate the Allen Place Senior Citizen Prom, which will be provided the participants with a wonderful night, consistent of dinner, raffles, live man, and dancing. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Sunday, September 29, to be the Allen Place Senior Center Prom Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May I have a motion in a second, please? All in favor? Motion passes. Thank you. Congratulations.
Good morning to our council president and council members. I am truly grateful to be here today to accept this proclamation from our representative, Councilwoman Darlene Harris. I am honored to have some of our honorees here today. All of them have been patient with me, because they have been on the road or this journey of health and wellness with Allen Place for 10 years. And I am truly also grateful, as Rebecca Harris was here as well, because Allen Place has participated with Chatham University in the Women's Initiative Program. Today, I stand here to say thank you, first of all, thanks to God, and to the service that He has allowed us to do in the city of Pittsburgh on the North Side. And we do reach out within Allegheny County to other faith-based organizations, churches, and what have you. It is an honor to honor these recipients that are here today, also with my husband, Milton Allen, who has given more than 50% into Allen Place in making things come together. We have Marvis Nichols here today, who is the program chairperson, who coordinates a lot of the events that we have over at Allen Place, Denise Barron, who I just have to applaud as well, because she is one of our community partners, who came on board before she took on the Growing Patch Daycare Learning Center, not daycare, Learning Center, I'm sorry. She always straightens me out on that one. And more than anything, we are blessed to have Joy Maxberry Woodruff and Judge Woodruff, who have been longtime friends of the Allens and have kept us in line legally, as we all know. But anyway, that many that you see here have given more than time, more than finance, but they've given us leadership and guidance in the programs. We now have more than six partnerships, and we are blessed today to find out that we may also be working with the Pittsburgh Police, I hope I'm saying it right, Athletic Association, to provide a boxing program for children and youth in our community on the North Side. A lot of the children are getting into trouble because they're saying, "We don't have anything to do." But hopefully, this will be a mentor program to bring some steam as well with the boxing. Thank you so much, Councilwoman Darlene, for all that you have done over the past 10 years. There is a picture of her in our program book, along with the things that she did at our ribbon cutting some 10 years ago. Thank each and every one of you. You may not be on the North Side, but you are of Allegheny County. Thank you again.
Well, it got me this time. Usually I don't say anything, but I feel it's necessary this time to acknowledge the people that I've been working with over the past 10 years. I retired from work in 2003, and I thought I was gonna sit at home and rest for a while. That lasted about three years and put me to work. Then she retired about five years ago. I said, "Oh, boy, it's over now." But I've come to realize that this is a passion for her, and we're gonna be in it until we go home. So I appreciate all the work that the honorees have done for us, and thank you all for having us here today, and appreciate everything. God bless you.
Good morning. My name is Marvis Nichols, and I've had the honor of doing the program planning for Allen Place for the last couple of years, and I'm very proud of the results. I'm very proud of the work that we provide, and I enjoy the participants who come. I think that really is what makes our program successful, is that we have some participants who really believe in what we're doing there. And I want to congratulate Jerry and Milton for the work that they have done with Allen Place for the last 10 years. And I want to wish them success in the future, and thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Denise Barron, and I am the CEO of Growing Patch Learning Center that is located in Allen Place. And I appreciate the opportunity to be here today to say thank you to the Allens for allowing me to bring my dream and my vision to pass as I work diligently with them on the North Side of Pittsburgh, helping to help the children in their educational piece. Thank you.
I guess just to close this out for us right now, I just want to, you know, first of all, just thank the council, you guys uplifting the Allen Place, and the publicity is great as well. I'm particularly fond of Allen Place because of the education that they provide for our young kids. That's extremely important. There are some good things that are happening in Pittsburgh, and this is one of those good things. I just appreciate your recognition. Thank you very much.
I serve all of the [inaudible].
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Bye, thank you very much. Congratulations.
Councilwoman Burgess, please.
Reverend and Mrs. Battle, come forward, please.
Whereas 5.9 million babies in the U.S., three or younger, live in poor or low-income families, with one in three mothers unable to provide their children the basic essential for their health and hygiene needs, like a clean, dry diaper. And whereas disposable diapers cost up to $150 per month per baby with no government assistance, and parents cannot take children to daycare without diapers preventing them from working or attending school. And whereas the nonprofit Western Pennsylvania Diaper Bank, established in 2012 and based in Pittsburgh's East End, at present is the only local organization that has addressed this need, as its sole purpose is the only diaper bank in the state west of Harrisburg. And whereas for over seven years, the Western Pennsylvania Diaper Bank, in following its mission to ensure that babies in need are clean, healthy, and dry, have distributed more than 1 million diapers to low-income or poverty-level families in Western Pennsylvania through a network of 24 social service agency partners. And whereas the Western Pennsylvania Diaper Bank now also provides period supplies to women in need through those agencies as part of the National Alliance for Period Supplies, supporting women's health and enabling them to go to work and school to break the cycle of poverty. And now therefore be resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend the Western Pennsylvania Diaper Bank for the vision of communities where all families have an equal opportunity to thrive. And be it further resolved, the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare the week of September 23rd to 30th, 2019, to be National Diaper Need Awareness Week in the City of Pittsburgh.
May I have a motion in a second, please?
Second.
All in favor? Motion passes. Thank you so much.
Now, let me just say a word about Reverend and Mrs. Battles. They are my friends, and they are Christian believers, and they act out their faith in action. And we are proud of them in our city, and we're proud of their work both in and outside the church, because the church is not just about worshiping in the building, it's about meeting the needs of people outside the building. And so I love you both. God bless you. Congratulations.
I'd like to say thank you to Councilwoman Burgess, thank you to the entire council. You have had us here for the last four years, helping us raise awareness of the diaper crisis in our community through National Diaper Awareness Week, and it's always the last week in September. And this is the week we try to raise as many diapers as we can through diaper drives, through donations, we offer volunteerism at our warehouse, for people to come volunteer and help sort and repackage the diapers. But one in three families, one in three moms, have experienced the diaper need. And diapers cost between $70 and $80 a month per baby, and they're awfully expensive. So, and moms have to choose between, you know, buying diapers or buying food, buying diapers and paying another bill, or buying just basic household necessities. So we're here to close the diaper gap, but we can't do it alone. We need the whole community behind us. We've given away over a million diapers, and that's just touching the surface of what's needed around in this community. So we need your help, and we thank you again for having us here. And we are, it's kind of late, but we are having a fundraiser event at the 20th Century Club, September 28, where Giselle Fetterman is going to be our speaker.
Hello, everyone, to the council president, all of you honorees. I just want to thank the community for what they have done. Most of our diapers come through donations from everyday folks. Also like to thank our corporate sponsor, Huggies.
Whereas 5.9 million babies in the U.S., three or younger live in poor or low-income families, with one in three mothers unable to provide their children the basic essential for their health and hygiene needs like a clean, dry diaper. And whereas disposable diapers cost up to $150 per month per baby with no government assistance and parents cannot take children to daycare without diapers preventing them from working or attending school. And whereas the nonprofit Western Pennsylvania Diaper Bank established in 2012 and based in Pittsburgh's East End, at present is the only local organization that has addressed this need, as its sole purpose is the only diaper bank in the state west of Harrisburg. And whereas for over seven years, the Western Pennsylvania Diaper Bank in following its mission to ensure that babies in need are clean, healthy, and dry, have distributed more than 1 million diapers to low-income or poverty-level families in Western Pennsylvania through a network of 24 social service agency partners. And whereas the Western Pennsylvania Diaper Bank now also provides period supplies to women in need through those agencies as part of the National Alliance for Period Supplies, supporting women's health and enable them to go to work and school to break the cycle of poverty. And now therefore be resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby commend the Western Pennsylvania Diaper Bank for the vision of communities where all families have an equal opportunity to thrive. And be it further resolved, the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby declare the week of September 23rd to 30th, 2019 to be National Diaper Need Awareness Week in the city of Pittsburgh.
You may have a motion in a second, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Thank you so much.
Now let me, let me just say a word about Reverend and Mrs. Battles. They are my friends and they are Christian believers and they act out their faith in action. And we are proud of them in our city and we're proud of their work both in and outside the church because the church is not just about worshiping in the building, it's about meeting the needs of people outside the building. And so I love you both. God bless you. Congratulations.
I'd like to say thank you to Councilman Burgess. Thank you to the entire council. You have had us here for the last four years, helping us raise awareness of the diaper crisis in our community through National Diaper Awareness Week. And it's always the last week in September. And this is the week we try to raise as many diapers as we can through diaper drives, through donations. We offer volunteerism at our warehouse for people to come volunteer and help sort and repackage the diapers. But one in three families, one in three moms have experienced the diaper need. And diapers cost between $70 and $80 a month per baby and they're awfully expensive. So, and moms have to choose between, you know, buying diapers or buying food. Buying diapers and paying another bill or buying just basic household necessities. So we're here to close the diaper gap, but we can't do it alone. We need the whole community behind us. We've given away over a million diapers and that's just touching the surface of what's needed around in this community. So we, we need your help and we thank you again for having us here.
Thank you.
And we are, it's kind of late, but we are having our fundraiser event at the 20th Century Club, September 28th, where Giselle Fetterman is going to be our speaker.
Hello, everyone, to the council president, all of you honorees. I just want to thank the community for what they have done. Most of our diapers come through donations from everyday folks. Also like to thank our corporate sponsor, Huggies, which donates us over a quarter million diapers every year. But also want to remind us that we actually use 144,000, correct me if I'm wrong, diaper, 77,000 diapers a day in Allegheny County, 144,000 diapers in our, in our region. So it's a very real need. And now, as Kathy, as it said in the proclamation, we've also now expanded our services into period supplies. So we'll be helping women from the age of 12 well into their 40s. And so, and we can't forget our seniors, who we also help with incontinence supplies. And we, we're taking a very large step to expand our services into everyday needs, washing powder, soap, toothpaste, toothbrush, deodorant, shampoo, black hair products, things that people, they need, but they have trouble maintaining. So with that said, we, we do thank you, but we also want to remind you
Okay, councilman, thank you very much. Madam Clerk, there are no proclamations to be read into the record this morning. And so that takes us, or concludes our proclamation portion of the council meeting and will take us into public comment. Anyone that is here this morning wishing to address city council will have, of course, three minutes in which to do so. I would like to take this time to remind everyone here that the rules of council are clear when they state that comment is limited to matters of concern, official action or deliberation which are at this time or could at another time come before the council. We do not permit profanity. We will maintain order at all times. We ask that you would please begin by giving your name and the neighborhood in which you reside for our public record. The green light will indicate the beginning of your three minutes. The yellow light will indicate you'll have one minute to summarize your thoughts. And when the red light comes on, your time will have expired. Good morning, Celeste, welcome.
Good morning. I'm here today just as Celeste as a Black woman in Pittsburgh. This is my son, who you probably never see, but this is my son Kai, who came down here with me because he was concerned about the Gender Equity Commission report, the condition of Black women in the city of Pittsburgh, and the condition of Black people in the city of Pittsburgh. I'm coming today off the front lines. We have been up at 2501 Brighton Road for the past few days in response to the brutal beating of the Reagan sisters. It's to make sure that that place never opens again to do business in that community. I'm going to read a letter that BPEP, Black Political Empowerment Project, wrote in collective with the organizations that are up there and also the individuals. And this is addressed to the Honorable Stephen A. Zopala Jr., Allegheny County District Attorney. Dear District Attorney Zopala, we write on behalf of the Black Political Empowerment Project and the Greater Pittsburgh Coalition Against Violence to urgently request that you press the strongest charges possible against the men who recently violently attacked the two African-American women at the Marshall Avenue Exxon gas station, which we now know is the Lehigh Gas Properties gas station. That's who owns the land. This is one of the most outrageous incidents we have ever seen practiced by employees of any business in the Pittsburgh region. We have begun to witness far too many instances in this nation of violence against people of color and particularly African-Americans. As African-American-based organizations, we will not tolerate the treatment shown in the video of these two African-American women. We ask that you, as the District Attorney of Allegheny County, send a very clear message that this type of treatment of African-Americans and particularly African-American women at the hands of men is totally unacceptable and that such acts will be prosecuted to the fullest extent of the law. We also ask that you move expeditiously to prosecute these two individuals. Thank you for your serious consideration of our request. And this is signed by all of the organizations in the collective. I don't know if you were aware of this letter, but I wanted to make sure that our city council and our elected officials are aware of this letter. I think I often talk about my ancestors. Fannie Lou Hamer was one of being sick and tired of being sick and tired. Yesterday, I watched the Journal of Truth and listened to her eight aisle woman's speech. And I was very disappointed to say that that still applies today. That Black women are women in the city, that our bodies should be respected, that Black women should be trusted, protected, and respected at all costs. We hope that our city council, especially our district one councilwoman, will come and stand with us in denouncing this behavior, this brutal beating. If you have not seen the video, it was not simple assault. It was not a misdemeanor. It was not something that should be given a summons in the mail. I think if it had been any other person, they would not have been escorted to their car, but to the jails. These sisters, they are biological sisters and they are at home hurting. We just want, oh yes, and we just want the support of our elected officials as we stand.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, may we have our next speaker then, please? Okay, good morning, Dr. Miller.
Dr. Ronaldan Miller, Bellezeur and Lawrenceville, home of the white queen. Global Intelligence Society candidate for president 2020, globalintelligencesociety.org. September is Global Intelligence Society-sponsored Latinx Intelligence Month. Dr. Fernando Maguayus, Brazilian Romanian-focused mathematician at Princeton University. He's a student of Dr. Manfredo de Carmo, who was one of the most influential and brilliant Brazilian mathematicians in the 20th century, also Romanian. Concerns of the city council include HIV and AIDS and gen sex identity formation. The following items are courtesy the City of Pittsburgh News Network and the Global Intelligence Society Global Information and Intelligence Service, which I founded a few years ago. City district representatives, do you know what escorts are? Mr. Kraus, District Three. Endosomal sorting complexes required for transport escorts from science, 21 December 2018. Escorts catalyze reverse topology, scission from the inner face membrane necks in HIV budding. Mr. Kraus has an HIV-positive male taking antiretroviral drugs to retain HIV inactivation, not one info, to suppress AIDS emergence and antiretroviral consequences, cognitive abnormalities. District representatives, especially female DRs in biological genetic information and intelligence, XCI is what? Are one or two X chromosomes expressed in female body cells. Ideally, one X via X chromosome inactivation, XCI. Corruptly, two, via activation of the second X, which is caused by heterozygous mutation in methyl CPG, binding protein MECP2. And so there's an emergence of motor and cognitive abnormalities. This is from the proceedings of the National Academy of Sciences, 10/1073/PNAS 171512/4115/2018. What do you think, councilors, happens to male gen sex identity formation if XCI is canceled and the silenced X gene in male cells is awakened? That's about 40 to 50% of our, of our cells. To Ms. Gross, what do you think your white, female, and male Democratic Party buddies at Lawrenceville Corporation, Valerie Fleischer and Matthew Galuso, think about XCI? Maybe you can talk XCI implications regarding all this with these two at lunch. Do they pay? Is she on, are you on vacant seat? The payroll. Okay, thank you, Dr. Miller.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak to city council this morning? We do have one more speaker. Okay, good morning, sir, welcome.
My name is Paul Harris. I'm Jesus Christ Almighty. My father is King David. In heaven, the living God. Today is judgment day for every man in the world. So anyone who does not live God's will will pay the wages of sin. Now I want to see the governor, I want to see the district attorney, and I would like to see the mayor. I've been asking for weeks. No one has come talk to me. That's why today is judgment day for everyone in the world. So can I please see them people? I just asked you for it. You didn't read Revelations? I got it, everyone in the world. Keep laughing. You gonna be the one to get it. I, I, I told everyone in the world, read Revelations. Okay? No one cares? All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to city council this morning? Okay, seeing no further speakers, we will close the public comment portion of the council meeting and proceed into presentation of papers. We begin with Councilman Burgess, our Chair of Finance and Law.
Yes, I have read Revelations. Mr. President?
Thank you, councilman.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 2078, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor to Enter Into An Amendment With Contribution Agreement With the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Act Through the Department of Transportation, the County of Allegheny, the Port Authority of Allegheny County Holding Acquisition Company LP, and the Pittsburgh Steelers For The Purpose Of The City Making Final Payments To The Commonwealth Due Toward Projects Related To Proposed Roadway Infrastructure Improvements On The City's North Shore And Further Authorizing The City Solicitor To Enter Into An amended Consent Order To Document Any Revised Obligations Consistent With This Resolution. Bill Number 2079, Resolution Authorizing The Mayor And Director Of The Department Of Finance To Enter Into An Agreement With The Commonwealth Of Pennsylvania To Be Able To Exchange Data. No costs will be incurred. Bill Number 2080, Resolution Authorizing The Mayor And Director Of The Department Of Finance To Enter Into An Agreement With Mar Duzel To Provide Auditing Services To The City. Total cost not to exceed $406,503 over three years with an option for two additional years. Bill Number 2081, Resolution Authorizing The Mayor And Director Of The Department Of Finance To Enter Into An Agreement With CSS Inc. For The Provision Of A Business Tax And Revenue Management Software Package For A Sum Not To Exceed $5 Million Over Five Years And For The Payment Of Costs Thereof.
President? Councilman?
There is a request to waive Rule Eight, so this can appear on tomorrow's agenda. So I'll make a motion to do that.
For Bill 2078, councilman?
2078.
Okay, we have a motion to waive the rules on Bill 2078 so that it may appear on tomorrow's standing committee agenda. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Do we have discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Posed abstentions, 2078? 2078 will appear on tomorrow's standing committee agenda. Councilman Coghill, our Chair of Urban Recreation.
Mr. President?
Thank you, councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 2082, Resolution Providing For An Agreement With The Pittsburgh Board Of Public Education, or Another Vendor Chosen Through The City Bid Process For The Purpose Of Providing Meals In Connection With The 2019-2020 Food Service Program In The Department Of Parks And Recreation. The total cost shall not exceed $850,000.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Gross, our Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Harris, our Chair of Human Resources.
Yes, I too have read Revelations. Thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman, thank you.
Councilwoman Harris presents Bill Number 2083, Resolution Authorizing The Mayor And Director Of Department Of Human Resources And Civil Service To Enter Into An Agreement With National Testing Network For Services Relating To The Administration Of A Fire Barrier Assessment For A Sum Not To Exceed $49,875.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Public Safety Services.
Mr. President?
Thank you, councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 2084, Resolution Authorizing The City To Enter Into A Professional Services Agreement With The University of Pittsburgh Medical Center Presbyterian For The Purchase Of Pharmaceutical Supplies, Medications, And Related Support Services Necessary For The Daily Operation Of The City's Bureau Of Emergency Medical Services For A Period Of Four Years Commenced In January 1st, 2020 At An Overall Cost Not To Exceed $192,000.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman O'Connor, our Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
Mr. President?
Thank you, councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 2085, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision To The City Of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan For 909 Liberty Interior Renovations At 909 Liberty Avenue. Bill Number 2086, Resolution Authorizing The URA To Acquire All The City's Rights, Title And Interests, If Any, Into The Following Publicly Owned Properties In The 21st Ward Of The City, Council District Number Six, Site Assemblage For Affordable Residential Development, Sedwick Street. Bill Number 2087, Resolution Authorizing The URA To Acquire All The City's Rights, Title And Interests, If Any, Into The Publicly Owned Properties In The Third Ward Of The City, Council District Number Six, Expanded Parking Facilities At 1812 Enoch Street. Bill Number 2088, Resolution Approving Execution Of A Deed By And Between The URA And The City For Sale Of Block 125, S Lot 125. In The Thirteenth Ward Of The City, Council District Number Nine, Public Park, 7100 Hamilton Avenue. Bill Number 2089, Resolution Authorizing The URA To Acquire All The City's Rights, Title And Interests, If Any, Into The Publicly Owned Properties In The Fifth Ward Of The City, Council District Number Six, Affordable Townhouse Development, 3313, 15, 3317, and 19 Milwaukee Street, 634, 636 Harrian Avenue, 633, and 635 OEP Street. Bill Number 2090, Resolution Authorizing The URA To Acquire All The City's Rights, Title And Interests, If Any, Into The Publicly Owned Property In The 21st Ward Of The City, Council District Number Six, Future Development, Bildale Street. Bill Number 2091, Resolution Authorizing The URA To Acquire All The City's Right, Title And Interests, If Any, Into The Publicly Owned Properties In The Fifth Ward, Council District Number Six, Rehabilitation, New Construction, 2932 Wiley Avenue.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Kail Smith, our Chair of Public Work Services.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Kail Smith presents Bill Number 2092, Resolution Authorizing The Mayor And The Department Of Mobility And Infrastructure To Apply For A Grant From The Redevelopment Authority Of Allegheny County's Gaming Economic Development Fund For Up To $500,000 To Provide Funding for up to five hundred thousand dollars to provide funding for the development of the West End Trolley Trail, and should the grant be awarded by RAAC, are authorized to enter into agreements with RAAC. In the event this grant is awarded, this resolution provides for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars. This grant does not require a local match. Bill number twenty ninety-three, resolution authorizing the mayor and the city and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to apply for a grant from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County's Gaming Economic Development Fund of up to five hundred thousand dollars to provide funding for shady side streetscape improvements, and should the grant be awarded, are authorized to enter into an agreement. In the event, this resolution provides for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars. The grant does not require a local match. Bill number twenty ninety-four, resolution authorizing the mayor and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to apply for a grant from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County Gaming Economic Development Fund of up to five hundred thousand dollars to provide funding for development of the Green Boulevard. Should the grant be awarded, we hereby authorize to enter into an agreement with RAAC. In the event this grant is awarded, this resolution provides for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars. The grant does not require a local match. Bill number twenty ninety-five, resolution authorizing the mayor and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to apply for a grant from RAAC Gaming Economic Development Fund of up to five hundred thousand dollars to provide funding for the construction of a pedestrian bridge at Davis Avenue, and should the grant be awarded, this grant provides for resolution for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars for this stated purpose. The grant does not require a local match. Bill number twenty ninety-six, resolution further amending resolution number seven seventy-two, adopting and approving the twenty seventeen capital budget and the twenty seventeen CDBG program, approving the twenty seventeen through twenty twenty-two capital improvement program by reducing Southwest Pittsburgh CDC by sixteen thousand five hundred dollars, increasing hope for tomorrow by five thousand dollars, increasing Sheridan Community Council by one thousand five hundred dollars, increasing Ram Recreation Center by five thousand dollars, increasing building bridges for business by five thousand dollars, and authorizing a subsequent agreement for operation, administrative expenses, maintenance, purchase of equipment, and/or rehabilitation of neighborhood facilities on behalf of the residents of the city. Bill number twenty ninety-seven, resolution further amending resolution number eight sixty-three, approving and adopting the twenty nineteen capital and the twenty nineteen CDBG grant program and the twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-four capital improvement program by reducing Birmingham Foundation West End Employment Center by one thousand dollars, increasing Sheridan Community Council by one thousand dollars, updating J.D. Edwards' financial information, and authorizing a subsequent agreement for operation, administrative expenses, maintenance, purchase of equipment, and/or rehabilitation of neighborhood facilities on behalf of the residents of the city.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Strasburger, our Chair of Innovation Performance and Asset Management.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill number twenty ninety-eight, resolution amending resolution two ninety-seven, amending an agreement with EDOC Technologies LLC for licensing services and maintenance and support services to update the scope of work at an additional cost not to exceed sixteen thousand two hundred sixty-three dollars and eighty-nine cent. Bill number twenty ninety-nine, resolution amending resolution number seven sixty-nine, which had previously amended resolution number four seventy-nine, authorizing the mayor and the director of permits, licenses, and inspections, and the director of city planning and the director of innovation and performance to enter into a second amended professional services agreement with Building I Inc. to purchase software and related support services that will create an interactive map for internal and public visual display of planning, permit, license, and violation data by adding one hundred and thirty-five thousand three hundred dollars in compensation and raising the overall contract to an amount not to exceed three hundred forty-one thousand three hundred dollars.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The chair has one communication from our, the director of our Office of Management and Budget. I'll need a motion to receive and file, please.
Council President Kraus presents Bill number twenty-one hundred, communication from Jennifer Ozinga, Acting Director of the Office of Management and Budget, submitting a three thousand one hundred and eighty dollar donation on behalf of the Pittsburgh Pirates Charities for the support of the city's sports baseball and softball team.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. May I have a motion to receive and file?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you very much. And then, under unfinished business, Madam Clerk, we have an appointment of Kevin Paulus as Director of Office and Management and Budget. We did hold an interview September eighteenth.
Bill twenty thirty-two, resolution appointing Kevin Paulus as the Director of the Office of Management and Budget.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. May I have a motion to approve?
No, ma'am.
Second. Discussion, Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say that I'm very thankful that the mayor found value in Kevin Paulus. I think he's going to be amazing at his job. He is a District Two resident, and I do want to apologize for missing the interview. I actually was on my way in, and someone in my office needed a ride, and by the time we got here after, you know, after we got together and then sat in traffic, I missed the interview. But I do want to say that I think that he's an amazing appointment. I think that the mayor, I'm thankful that he saw value in him, but we also see a lot of value in him and the Paulus family in District Two. He was born and raised in Sheridan, his family's from Westwood initially, and he he moved back to Westwood, so, but they have a big family in our area. They do a lot with the Polish organizations in across the region and just really volunteered with Canavan and with other schools, with coaching, with, you know, athletic associations in our area, coaching. The whole family coaches and volunteers and and really spends a lot of time with kids, a lot of kids in our area of, in all of our neighborhoods. So, I really think, not only is he going to be great here, he's really great in the community, and so is his family. So, I want to acknowledge all their work and thank the mayor for finding value in his in his actual professional skills as well.
Thank you, Councilwoman. With that, all in favor? Aye. Opposed abstentions? Seeing none, motion passes. Next order of business is reports of committee for final action. We begin with Councilman Burgess, our Chair of Finance and Law.
Councilmember Reverend Burgess presents Bill number twenty seventy-five, report of the Committee on Finance and Law for September eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number twenty twenty, resolution further amending resolution number eight sixty-three, adopting and approving the twenty nineteen capital budget, the twenty nineteen CDBG program, and the twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-four capital improvement program by amending various CDBG program line items, adding J.D. Edwards' financial information, and authorizing a subsequent agreement for operation, administrative expenses, maintenance, purchase of equipment, and/or rehabilitation of neighborhood facilities on behalf of the residents of the city. Bill number twenty twenty-one, resolution further amending resolution number seven ninety-six, resolution adopting and approving the twenty fourteen capital budget and the twenty fourteen CDBG grant program, and approving the twenty fourteen through twenty nineteen capital improvement program by reducing refinished gym floor by sixty-four thousand seventy-two dollars and thirty-three cent, splash zones by twenty thousand one hundred and forty-six dollars forty-seven cents, and increasing ramp and public sidewalk program by eighty-four thousand two hundred eighteen dollars and eighty cents. Bill number twenty twenty-two, resolution further amending resolution number eight fifty-eight, by reducing emergency sheltering by thirteen dollars and forty cent, and increasing ramp and public sidewalk by thirteen dollars and forty cent. Bill number twenty twenty-three, resolution further amending resolution number eight sixty-one, by reducing park reconstruction by ten dollars, pool rehabilitation by ten thousand dollars, and increasing ramp and public sidewalk by ten thousand ten dollars. Bill number twenty twenty-five, resolution authorizing the purchase of certain properties by the city in lieu of eminent domain in order to advance city's proposed permanent closures of the Timberland Bridge.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading of the title of these bills under our Finance and Law Committee. Is there further discussion on any of these bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when the names are called. Those opposed will vote no. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mrs. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President?
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bills having then received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And next, we have our Committee on Public Work Services. Our Chair is Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Kell Smith presents Bill number twenty seventy-six, report of the Committee on Public Works for September eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number twenty thirty-five, resolution amending resolution number five oh seven, by extending the expiration date of the payment from the property owners to the treasury of the city from sixty days to one hundred and five days from the effective date of the resolution, August first of two thousand nineteen. Bill number twenty fifty-nine, resolution granting unto Ice Factory Limited Partnership their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense three protective bullets in constructing a new stormwater tap in at one hundred forty-third street in the sixth ward, seventh council district.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading in the title of these bills under our Public Work Services Committee. Is there further discussion on either of the bills? Okay, seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when the names are called. Those opposed will vote no. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mrs. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President?
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bills then having received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Our final committee in the morning is our Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs. Our Chair is Councilman O'Connor.
Mr. President?
Councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill number twenty seventy-seven, report of the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for September eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number two thousand, resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for Light of Life Ministries at two thirty-four Vogli Street. Bill number twenty twenty-eight, resolution authorizing the mayor and the Office of Manag- and Management and Budget to renew the non-exclusive license agreement with the Federal General Services Administration for the Veterans Affairs Highland Drive Campus at seventy-one eighty Highland Drive for limited use and to conduct due diligence pursuant to the application approved by the Federal Emergency Management Agency and the Department of Justice to acquire the property for law enforcement and emergency management purposes. Bill number twenty thirty, resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for the St. Peters Resident Project located at five hundred Lockhart Street.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You have heard the reading in the title of the bills under our Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs. Do we have further discussion on any of the bills? Okay, seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action, and all in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when the names are called. Those opposed will vote no. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mrs. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President?
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bill having then received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Next, that takes us into motions and resolutions. I have two very brief meeting announcements. This afternoon, council will be holding a briefing with sessions beginning at one thirty and then again at two fifteen as it relates to audit contracting. And also, please be advised that the executive session that was scheduled for this afternoon has to be rescheduled. I will advise members, the clerk will advise members, when a new date and time has been scheduled. Under motions and resolutions, I have Councilman Lavelle, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I'll try to be brief, and I would ask my colleagues to sort of just let me speak because I don't really have clear thoughts at the moment, but I do think we need to address the incident that occurred at the Northside Gas Station. First, I want to thank Commander Ragland. The commander was very responsive anytime I reached out to him, and he also spent a considerable amount of time trying to educate me on the sort of policies and procedures of the police, because I, like many, was very confused as to why they didn't arrest the gentleman on sight. And he began to explain that when they, when they're not on sight to see something occur, they can't arrest you on sight, but they need to be able to review the evidence, come back, and do due diligence, things of that nature. He also spent time trying to educate me on the difference between simple and aggravated assault and what bases, what are the basis for those various charges. One being the influence, how much bodily harm was done determines whether or not it gets elevated to aggravated assault. Was a weapon used determines whether or not it gets elevated to aggravated assault, as well as, I believe, whether or not you're attacking someone in a protected class while doing their job. So, a teacher teaching, and you punch the teacher, under normal circumstances, that's simple assault, but because they're a protected class doing their job, it would actually be elevated to aggravated. And so, intellectually, I sort of understand what happened. Doesn't mean that I agree with it, and it doesn't mean that emotionally we should be okay with it either. And so, intellectually, I understand why the police acted the way they did, and I think, I believe they acted appropriate. And so, I want to thank the commander for explaining all of that to me and doing, and handling how they've handled it so far, and also allowing the protesters the space and the time to protest over the course of the weekend. But with that being said, I think council occupies a different space. We occupy a space where we don't have to look at it purely in black and white, and in fact, most things we don't. We're allowed to sort of consider the circumstances that lead up to things, and in fact, we as a body often push law where we believe it should go to protect people, and we often try to make statements, and we often do it one of two ways. One is through legislation, and we can look at source of income, as an example, that's going to be hit it back to the courts. Hopefully, it's for passage, lost and stolen handguns, rental registry. These are all things that we sort of try to push the boundary on because we believe it's the right thing to do. The other way we sort of show influence is through our advocacy and how we respond to tragic events and how we respond to light of life, or how we respond to even the loss of a canine within the police department and all of us attending that funeral. And I think this is also one of those moments where we need to respond appropriately to a tragic event that happened in our city. Coming off the recent report that was released that literally said the best thing a black person in this city could do is move, and that the most vulnerable person in this city is a black woman. That should guide us a little differently on how we respond to this tragic event. Yes, maybe from a very black and white standpoint, the amount of abuse she suffered isn't immediately considered aggravated assault, but if you look at it in a larger sense and consider the lack of education, the lack of job opportunities, the public policies that have pushed us into deplorable housing conditions, when you look at all the circumstances and then you put an assault on top of that, and the lack of a response from public safety, that is true trauma, physical, emotional, mental. That is true trauma and should be considered, in my personal opinion. I believe we, as a body, as we often do, tend to make statements, whether it's a will of counsel, whatever it may be, and I believe this is one of those instances where we as a body need to send a clear directive to the DA's office, who I believe also has the ability to look at things a little differently and not consider them in strictly black and white, and that we should ask the DA to raise the charges to aggravated assault, which is my understanding is the highest charge that these individuals can be charged with, that in its totality, this is absolutely aggravated assault. Or, if the DA sent- Or if the DA simply, if this city saw a video of three black men grab a white woman, drag her across, by her hair, drag her across the pavement, slam her head up against a gas pump, you can't convince me, no one can convince me, that in some form or fashion, they wouldn't say that pump or that pavement was an actual weapon and raise those charges. There's no way you can convince me that we wouldn't see immediately those men being arrested. I understand the circumstances of why they weren't immediately, but once those charges are increased, that individual can be assaulted. So I'm asking my colleagues to please stand with me, um, in writing a letter to the DA asking for those charges to be increased to aggravated assault. Thank you.
I'll stand with you, Councilman. Uh, I had Councilwoman, uh, Smith, then I had Councilwoman Gross, then I have Councilwoman Harris. But I'll stand with you, Councilman.
So I just want to first thank Councilman Lavelle, 'cause we, he and I were talking prior to this um, about what we can do as a council. And although I do believe that we should be doing something more and having conversations with the DA, I think that we need to do same, some things that are more preventive. Because this is not the first time this has happened in Pittsburgh, and it's not the second time, and it won't be the last time, I'm sure, unless we start making some real attempts to educate people and bridging the cultural differences that are occurring here in the city of Pittsburgh. And there are some real differences. And so I think that that's some of the things we talked about, possibly tying in money from the URA into, um, you know, some trainings and some other things, um, because I think sometimes when dollars are involved, people start paying attention a little bit. Um, unfortunately, that's what it takes sometimes. But I do want to thank Councilman Lavelle, uh, for really, you spoke so eloquently. I don't think there's anything more I can say on that subject, so I'm willing to follow your lead and to work with you on that. Um, but I also want to say that this past week, or yesterday, we lost a true, true champion for special education in the city of Pittsburgh, Dr. Kay Couples passed away. And I think we should give a moment of silence for Dr. Couples. If anybody knows Dr. Couples, his, the stadium's Couple Stadium is named after his father, um, who donated, who spent a tremendous amount of time in the city of Pittsburgh with our youth and athletics, and that's why the stadium was named after his father. But Kay Couples, his son, um, was just a, an amazing person when it came to special education, student services, and to, um, advocating for, and education in general, and just advocating for people most in need. And, um, and then he's, his son became a teacher, his ex-wife is a teacher, and they've just done a lot for Pittsburgh Public Schools. Uh, Kay went on to teach at, um, Point Park and at the University of Pittsburgh as an adjunct professor. But there wasn't anybody who could, um, who would know anything more about special education than Kay Couples, um, during his time here. Um, and I will say that he's, um, he and his family have done, not only have they done a lot, um, for special education, but they've done a lot for people in general. And so I'd just like to give a moment of silence to the family, for Kay Couples.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Gross.
I was going to speak to a different topic, but I'm, I just want to say thank you to Councilman Lavelle for, um, for your words, for your perspective, and for your leadership, and I'm happy to support you as well. Um, and if there's any other council member that wants to respond, I'll defer to, 'cause I have another topic to talk about. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, Councilwoman.
Okay. Yes, I was, uh, also down for quite a while yesterday. And I did talk to the commander, um, which the gas station does sit in my district. So, uh, I had concerns, especially it being women. And I really didn't get to see any tape because, uh, I'm being told on my computer that I have to be eighteen. So thanks to Channel Four, they showed me the whole, uh, piece, uh, twice. And I didn't get to talk to the commander yet at that point. I did talk to one of the sergeants. And, uh, not until later on, I found out that, uh, three would be held for simple assault. Uh, when I looked at the tape, um, and this was, I guess, two men from Pakistan or, um, somewhere, uh, uh, from a different country. And, uh, one white man, uh, in this, in this video. I didn't get to see what happened within the store, uh, but it all started with an argument over spilt gasoline. The reason they explained to me is because, uh, simple assault, uh, if, is always what they use unless, um, there have been injuries or, uh, they have used some kind of weapon. And it appeared on the tape, it looked like the gentleman had, I don't know if I'd call him gentleman, but had something in his hand when he was hitting her. So when I went home that night and got to talk to the commander again and watched the tape, uh, again, it was an open hand that was being used. And I know the police had a bunch of different, um, videos from there. I thought it was terrible. Um, how dare they hit a woman? Not just one, but three. And as I thought, they had a weapon and she was injured. That upgrades it from a simple assault to aggravated assault. However, there was no weapon. Uh, it was an open hand that he was using. And, uh, as much as I didn't like what I seen there, um, she did not have any injuries. She did not go to the hospital, and she told the police she didn't have injuries. I don't know how she couldn't possibly had injuries, uh, if you would have seen the full video. So, um, and that's what I shared, uh, with, uh, the commander. That's what I planned to share with the DA's office. But I can't tell them to go and do something that isn't, you know, if there hasn't been injuries and there hasn't been a weapon. However, um, if there were injuries, which, uh, they told me the woman had no injuries, did not go to the hospital, and I, I just can't even imagine her not having injuries. And the weapon that, that now is in the hands of the DA. But those are the two difference between the aggravated assault and the simple assault. But, I mean, I think those guys need to be evaluated to go and hit and beat on a woman like that, all three of them. I mean, they really need to learn their place. And I hope that both of their gas stations are done for good. Because we don't need people like that on the Northsides, nor, uh, North Hills. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, Councilman, um, Cockhill, yes?
And then we'll get back to Ms. Gross, I guess. But, uh, I wanted to thank Councilwoman Lavelle for his leadership on this roll. Uh, I don't know the particulars how it escalated, uh, to, to what it did, but, um, you know, he said it best, if it were two white women being beat by three black men, I think, uh, it'd be quite a different story. So glad to support you and your efforts. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Burgess. I'll defer to. Councilwoman.
I'll defer to Erica.
Councilwoman Strasburger.
Thank you. Yeah, I just, I can't say it better than Councilman Lavelle. Um, I just wanted to let him know that I will support him in his effort to send a cohesive message to the DA's Apollo. You know, if we're going to call Pittsburgh the most livable city, a livable city has to be livable for everybody. And that means that we need to center our residents of color and, and black women in particular. And, um, we have a lot of work to do. I also am finding it incredibly concerning that, um, you know, we like to say we're, we're stronger than hate and we're stronger together, but that, um, an incident like this can, can pit two different types of ethnic minorities against one another. The rhetoric calling to, calling for, uh, sending them back is the wrong reaction here. And, um, it's reprehensible what, what they did to these black women. It's absolutely terrible. And I want them to be prosecuted to the full extent of the law. At the same time, this is not the time to create divides in our communities, in our city. That's all I have to say. Thank you, Councilman Lavelle, for, for taking the initiative on this, and I fully support your work.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Council, who am I going to?
I'll be brief. I was just, I was just gonna say, glad to sign that any moment, and I don't understand the reasoning not to charge them with a higher crime. Um, but I just want to say I totally support Councilman Lavelle and whatever we have to sign this afternoon, that's no problem.
All right. I just watched the video again, and, um, while you were speaking, and it's, it's reprehensible. Uh, clearly, the definition of harm and weapon are, are open for discussion. Councilman, uh, Burgess.
So, again, I, I, um, I stand with, uh, Councilman Lavelle. I will sign off, um, and whoever wants to write it, I'll work with them. Um, I think we should do that today.
Yeah.
I think that should be at today's task. Any, to me, any violence, particularly to women and children, is reprehensible. It is, just in my own, uh, life, um, it has always been, um, something I have been intolerant of, is violence toward women and children, irregardless of their race or, or ethnicity. That it occurred to, to women of color is sad. And I do think that, um, we should send the letter. Second of all, I, as often as I can, I do talk about unity and, and moving forward and how we can as a people in Pittsburgh move forward. But part of moving forward is a clear recognition that we are divided now. Our communities are divided now. Our focus is divided now. Our lack of inclusion divides us now. Our lack of respect for African-American leadership divide us now. The economic and the social conditions of black people in particular, and black communities in general, divide us now. And, you know, um, I listened, I, I don't often say this, but the question is not, does every community, should they be treated equally? They absolutely should not. They should be treated equitably. Those communities in the most need should receive the most resources, period. And the question is, we, we can, you know, we can demonstrate whenever there's an incident, we have these moments, and this instance is horrific and we should write this letter. But day in, day out, the real litmus test of our desire is to be inclusive in terms of our economic decisions, every day, every day. Are we going to empower traditional African-American communities? Are we going to be inclusive of African-American leadership? Are we going to hold our police force accountable at every day in terms of visiting, countering with its citizens? It is not a, it is not incident-driven, it's an everyday commitment. And although we are better, we have not, we are not the most livable city for everyone. We are the most livable city for few. We are a divided city. We're the tale of two cities. It has been that way. Even though we're getting better, we must realize that, that, that there should be an overwhelming influx of capital commitment and resources to the African-American community in Pittsburgh, period. And, and, and until we do that, um, because remember, the market will take care of these other communities. You don't have to put a dime in the Squirrel Hill. You don't have to put a dime in the Southside Flats. You don't have to put a dime in the Shady Side. The market will take care of them without any government assistance. The government assistance should be, should be infused in the communities of promise, those communities, um, that have been devoid of, of, of resources. I have found, I've been blessed to be able to bring more resources to the ninth council district since I've been a member of council, more government resources, more economic resources, but it's still not enough. And so my argument's going to be, every time there's an incident, you've heard it before, I'm going to make the two arguments. One, yes, horrific, horrific, awful, attitude of problems, yes, Pittsburgh has a problem with how we deal with African-Americans. But then my second thing is going to be, are we are committed to bring, to allowing African-American leadership and to invest in African-American businesses, to invest in African-American people, and invest in African-American communities? When we do those things, both those things, then we will be able to heal the divide. As long as we only get mad when there's an incident, and then we go on and say, oh, there's an incident, and the incident's over, and then things stay the same, it will not get better. It will only get better when we put our money and our commitment where our mouth is. That's what I think, and that's what I think every day. And so I, I, I'm going to write the letter. At least I think there are seven or eight of us that will sign it. Um, and, you know, won't be, it won't surprise me that we all won't sign it, because that's the nature of our city. But we will, we will make a statement that this is wrong and that we are, not only is this wrong, we expect better every day.
Okay, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. And I really want to thank all, um, council for their, for their words on this important issue. Um, but on the heels of, I think, Councilman Burgess's comments about how we center the decisions that we make every day and the large investments that we are able, that we do make as a city all the time. Um, I just wanted to acknowledge for my colleagues that last week I was at a conference in Texas hosted by the U.S. Water Alliance, and it was a combination of, um, community activists and, and equity activists and water engineers in the same place, in space. It was really fascinating, every single panel, whether it was on lead water service line replacements, whether it was on water affordability, equitable infrastructure, green infrastructure, um, we were looking at these large public investments um, and centering people and community investments. Um, so it really brought home with me how important it is to re, to remember, and I know that I've said it before here at council, um, that in rebuilding, when we make these infrastructure decisions, we are rebuilding the city, sometimes underground, right? We see the city being built above ground and most notably by the private market, um, with big flashy buildings in, um, the wealthier neighborhoods especially. Uh, but we have a public decision to make when we're expending public dollars for public infrastructure. Um, and a, and a reminder that the nearly hundred million dollars that we will have spent over the last two years um, rebuilding, um, and replacing lead water service lines has been only in low and moderate income neighborhoods um, where there are, uh, the highest propensity, density of children, um, and lead water service lines. And you can see those on the map at PWSA. And I think that's the kind of work that we need to keep in front of us when we're talking about where our tax credit's going, um, where our public investment's going, where our capital budget's going, at any, either here at the city budget or in our authority budgets. Um, it's always the right question to ask, who benefits and who pays? So, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Uh, I have Councilwoman Harris, then Councilman Coghill.
Hey, I, I actually think that, uh, we should take that ride again around to all the neighborhoods and look. and look at the haves and half-nots. And you watch the haves still going up and the half-nots blinking door. But getting back to this letter, I would hope that in, in writing this letter, we don't try to tell what laws, but as Erica said, you know, the highest extent of the law possible being. I just, you know, would hope so. I had, I'd be happy to work with you on it since it is in my district. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Cockell, followed by Councilwoman Kail Smith.
I'll be brief, just getting back to the subject of water. I want to first thank the other council members who voiced their concerns and offered their help. I happened to be on the golf course that day and had gotten a text from Councilwoman Kail Smith, was having a fabulous round until then, I'll say, but, you know, but I'll say this, through that, I know that Director Hisrich was somewhat critical of PA American Water Company in the morning, and I was kind of glad he was because I needed somebody there that, you know, kind of pushed them. But after the scope of things and seeing the scope of things, I had thought, I had shades back to 1979. We had water buffaloes and we had, we were without water for, I think, a month, and it was horrible. But ultimately, I think PA American did a really good job in, in recovering. It may have been slow to respond at first. I think they recovered very well. Your former employee, Neil, was fantastic with me. He was on the phone with me, was keeping me informed. And we had water the very next day. So what turned out to be a catastrophic incident seemed like they recovered very well. And water is safe and clean and drinkable today. I know there's some issues as far as homeowners, as to who's going to compensate them for, you know, the damages that they incurred, but just to let them know, I'll be, you know, talking to PA American and Neil and keep them abreast on that. So, thanks.
Hey, thank you. Councilwoman Kail Smith?
Thank you. And I also want to thank Director Hisrich for his response and, and the public safety folks and how they responded during that time because it was difficult. But I'm not so pleased with response from PA American in terms of the communication, I think was very confusing coming out for residents. I mean, people weren't sure whether they, everyone should boil water, whether it was just PA American residents, you know, customers. So I think there was some confusion that needed to be cleared up, and eventually it was, but it did take some time. And if you're going through that in the moment, you want information now, you don't want it, you know, a day late or even a couple hours later. So I just want to say that part. But I just went back to the subject, and I'm, all I'm going to say about it, and I won't say another word, is that I hear everything everyone's saying about sending the letter to, to the DA. And while I agree to send a letter to the DA, I want to make it clear, I, I support Steve Zapala. I, my cousin dates his son, she helps on his campaign. So this is not political for me. This is making sure that we're addressing this in the right way. But I think that, you know, if we only go to Steve Zapala for the answers, then we are using, exploiting this situation, another tragedy for politics. We have to go further than just, and I agree with Reverend Burgess was saying, we have to go further than just sending one letter. And so that it has to be that we are taking some steps to do preventive stuff. And whether that's investing in our communities of color or whether it's, and I, and I, you know, I also say that we need communities that are doing well to also be invested in so that they remain stable. So I, you know, we may see things a little bit, you know, differently in some of that. But I do agree that we have to do something further than what we're saying. And, and if we're just sending a letter, then you can count me out. But if we're doing more, count me in. Thank you.
Okay. This weekend was a good example of anyone out there that wonders what it's like to be a member of city council, between the water main break that you had, the incident in Marshall Shadland, the drug overdose deaths. We begin our day with the best of intention, right? And, and little do you know where the world's going to take you at that moment in time. With that, if there's nothing further from members, then may I have a motion to...
I want to ask for, and I'm not sure how to do this, but I want to, I'll just, I'll ask for it and then I'll later to work with clerk. I want to call for a town hall meeting on issues of equity, diversity, inclusion in the city of Pittsburgh. Televast.
Form of a motion, then?
Form of motion.
Okay, and so that is in the, in the platform of a, of a...
Televast Town Hall Meeting.
Post-agenda, out of, in council, out of council?
It'll be in the community, in the community.
Would it be a public hearing?
Uh, no, not, not exactly a public hearing. We've done town hall meetings before. They're, they're sort of more like post-agendas. I, I mean, it's a post-agenda, really, so I'll, I'll call it a post-agenda in the community on diversity, issues of equity, diversity, and inclusion in the city of Pittsburgh.
Yeah, I'm not convinced we need a motion or a second. I think we can just do that, can't we?
I think you need, to be a televised, I think you need a motion.
Okay.
Do you already have a second?
We do. Is there discussion? So in, in terms of equity, I'm not convinced a single location provides equity. I think we may need to visit several locations.
I'm open to that.
Okay, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Post abstentions, motion passes, may I have a motion then to approve our minutes and adjourn the meeting?
Second.
All in favor, aye.